Okay. This is the District 11 portion of the candidate forum. I'm going to do my best to make sure I have everyone's names correctly. We have, and just raise your hand, okay? We have Tony Belingram, we have Andre Bergen, Kurt Collier, Stephen Dingle, Nate Jester. And there are three candidates that are not with us, I believe that's right. Harold Hardnett, Wayne Martin, and Reginald Russian. Okay. District 11 is an open seat like Council President. The current council member is Marcy Overstreet. So she had to pick, and she decided to run for Council President. Let's jump right in. For this question, you all have a minute. I probably won't go as long with you because there's so many of you, okay? No, that's fair. That's fair. Okay. And I think this is particularly important for the outside districts. Most traffic deaths are preventable, and they have historically impacted black and brown communities, especially in red line neighborhoods south of I-20 that still lack decent sidewalk coverage. The current Atlanta City Council has set a goal of eliminating traffic fatalities by 2040. That is called Vision Zero. What do you think is the biggest threat to the safety of pedestrians in District 11? And how do you plan to address it if you are elected? And for this, why don't we do a little bit of popcorn? So we'll start with Tony, and then we'll go to Nate, and then we'll go to Andre, and do it that way.
I want to clarify something. You said, I heard the question. What did you say, to residents or pedestrians?
What is the biggest threat to the safety of pedestrians in District 11? And how do you plan to address it if you are elected?
Thank you. I'm Tony Belingram, candidate for District 11. And so I think the greatest issue for pedestrians in southwest Atlanta for District 11 is sidewalks and the connectivity of sidewalks. Sidewalks are, we just got new sidewalks on Cascade. And part of the dilemma for us is how we value people who need sidewalks. There was a big conversation when we had a transportation meeting, and the conversation was because we had a sidewalk that was 10 to, and then the street was 10-10, and then a two-foot buffer, and then another four-foot sidewalk. So I'm going to say sidewalks, because I see that's the problem. But the dilemma was that people did not value the people who need sidewalks. And so we have not pushed and prioritized to ensure that everybody has safe and equitable access as they're walking down the street.
So I was reading today numbers that were describing exactly what you were talking about. And what I saw was that two-thirds of traffic fatalities happen in black communities like southwest Atlanta. So this is a public health issue. This is a public safety issue. Everyone deserves to be able to get home or get wherever they're going regardless of their mode of transportation. Today, I was knocking on doors deep in southwest Atlanta on Butler Road, Tail Road, and I almost got hit by a car in these streets near where I grew up that have not had sidewalks for a long time. I'm focused on allocating the money to be able to provide sidewalks, traffic calming measures, to save lives. My understanding is DOT has $10 million in unspent funds for traffic calming. Let's put it to use. And let's use equity mapping to make sure that money gets spit in the communities that need it most, like southwest Atlanta.
Biggest threat, one, lack of traffic calming mechanisms. We dealt with this in Alamo Park, where even if we have sidewalks, we don't have a way to slow down the cars. Campbellton Road becomes a highway. Cascade becomes a highway. The complete streets start to solve for that, but we need ways to slow down cars, particularly in black communities where sidewalks don't exist.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Dingle. This is a very interesting perspective when it comes to southwest Atlanta, because in my experience, we have a lot of institutions that people go to to walk, from Green Bra Mall in the morning to the Nature Trail on Cascade, to even our YMCA's and rec centers. So southwest Atlanta has to become a culture to wear walkability around the entire district, becomes a thing, and we have to prepare for that, like everyone said, with the mechanisms around infrastructure. So we have to create a culture that improves upon walkability and the safety of the people, like Ms. Belingram said, the people who do actually walk around our city. So southwest Atlanta has a little development to go when it comes to taking care of people who walk around and maybe bike in our constituency. But I'm looking forward to improving that as the next city council member of District 11.
All right. The key issue, or the key threat, is the lack of sidewalks and proper crosswalks. Many of these fatalities and accidents are happening when people are trying to cross the main streets, like Campbellton, like Cascade, Fair Road. We need more traffic devices that are geared towards slowing down traffic and making people aware, drivers aware, that there's someone waiting to cross the street. Even when crossing that street at a designated crosswalk, the, I forget what you call them, little rubberized section to get onto that sidewalk, those need to be repaired and updated. If you're on a motorized wheelchair, you're in trouble if a car's coming, and you need to get onto that sidewalk.
Many residents want safer streets but resist changes when it comes to parking spots or reducing driver speeds. How would you balance political pressures with the need for safe and sustainable transportation infrastructure that meets future and community needs, not just those of today's drivers? Oh, we're going to start, we're going to do the same format, but we're going to start with you, and then go here and vice versa.
Could you say it again? Because you were repeating.
Many residents want safer streets but resist changes when it comes to parking spots or reducing driver speeds. How would you balance political pressure with the need for safe and sustainable transportation infrastructure that meets future community needs, not just those of today's drivers?
So, you know, I have a business, and we work with churches and nonprofits to build affordable homes. It's a, it's a community partnership business. And one of my first projects, we went door to door in that community, talking to people about what we wanted to do. I think that is the approach that you take to control a narrative and inform people about why we are trying to do what we do. There is going to be some resistance to any change. There are literally people who don't like sidewalks. But we need to have a conversation about how we can save lives of our friends, our families, and our neighbors. I also think we need to be clear that there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution. Sidewalks are expensive. They can take a long time. But there are some other things that we can do that are maybe less disruptive, that can help save lives. I'll give a very specific example, that is painting sidewalks bright colors. Like this doesn't cost a lot of money, but the data shows that this reduces traffic fatalities.
Yes, thank you. So I think part of it is, we have to have listening sessions. We have to have conversations. We have to ensure that people know that we care about what's going on with them. And then we have to help people to see that the change matters and where it matters, and how, if we want a thriving community, an entire thriving District 11, then we have to make sure that all the players are able to come to the table. That's seniors, that's businesses, that's young people, those are residents, those are people who walk and people who drive. And so we bring them all, and then we talk about why the things that we are doing are necessary. And then how it is that we make sure that they understand it. And then we talk to them about, and make sure that they understand, not just understand it, but also that they understand the roadmap, and that we play out what we say we're going to do, that we create trust, inclusivity, and make sure that people feel good about what's happening.
I'm glad you asked the question when you asked about current residents and weren't about the future. When we were, when I was participating in some community meetings regarding the complete streets of Cascade Road, it was a lot of constituents that were upset at sidewalks existing, potential bike lanes, and although everybody supported their property value increasing due to these sidewalks and bike lanes, they were saying, you would hear on the community meetings, like, "We didn't ask for this. Who made this determination?" And they felt like the city government was informing them rather than involving them in the process. So for me, I'm one of the few people that enjoy making tough decisions, to where you have to have vision and explain to people, "Look, this is the pros of sidewalks, of bikeability, of reducing fatalities and accidents, but also this is the inconvenience." And you give them the option to say, "If we go this route, we're preparing for the future of Atlanta as it becomes more connected. If they say the inconvenience is too large, then it may just take some compromises." But I love working through those tough problems, seeing what the community wants, explaining the future, and deciding how we move forward together.
So Andre Bergen. The biggest issue is, when we talk about development, pedestrians are our afterthought, not a part of the planning, right? We think buildings, we think parking spaces. And once it's built, then we try to add on pedestrian safety, and then people are upset because it doesn't feel right. What we need to do, and to make it less controversial, is to make sure that when we're planning, we're planning holistically to say, "Hey, when we're talking about improving the area, it includes cars, but it also includes people. What's the plan? How's that look?" And then from there, the advocacy to the neighbors becomes so much easier because it's a holistic plan to say, "You can get here by foot, by car, by bike. We've thought about it completely." And it becomes a lot less controversial to actually implement and get sound on from the rest of the council people.
Could you repeat the question?
Many residents want safer streets but resist changes when it comes to parking spots or reducing driver, wait, was that correct? Yeah. Or reducing driver speeds. How would you balance political pressure with the... That was so...
That was it. That was the question.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Many residents want safer streets but resist changes when it comes to parking spots or reducing driver speeds. How would you balance political pressure with the need for safe and sustainable transportation infrastructure that meets future community needs, not just those of today's drivers?
I have not encountered anyone that was against safety. Now, when it comes to resistance from certain developments, it's usually because of lack of information, the way it is explained to them what's going to be built, how, and for who, and for how long. Sidewalks are essential. We're all, we walk primarily. You can hear me? Okay. We walk. Driving is something that's great, it's a luxury, but we live in a city, so we need to be able to walk and commute, whether that be walking to a train, walking to a bus, and then being transported. But we need to have safe modes of transportation to get to those places. We need sidewalks, and we just explained that. And in the feasibility of what we are, how we're developing as a city, we are a city. And we're going to continue to have greater density. We need to be able to walk and get around.
A question for you all. What is, and when I ask you this, there are a lot of you, I'm going to ask that you not repeat the answer of one of your opponents, but give an original answer. Okay? What is the number-one transportation and mobility challenge facing District 11? And why don't we start with you, Kurt, and then we'll work our way inside to outside. And make sure you hold the mic close so that people can hear who are watching on the livestream.
Transportation mobility would be just that, the ability to get around without the use of a car. We are drastically underfunded as a city when it comes to mass transit. Trains, we started, we had ground zero of Terminus. The city of Atlanta used to be called Terminus. We were a major transportation hub. We moved goods, we moved people through rail. Then we had buses. We are not... I didn't see the, I just saw, okay, I had more time. All right. Let me get back on track then. The major mobility issue is that we are not investing enough in our public transit system. And that's a threat, is lack of investment.
I'll go. Andre Bergen. Last mile connectivity. On, in District 11, Campbellton Road has the 83, which is the highest traffic road route in the system. But last mile connectivity is the issue. And we've talked about it before. We talked about sidewalks, we talked about traffic calming. When you catch the bus leaving Oakland City, you're trying to get somewhere. And if the bus drops you off on the side of the road and there isn't a sidewalk, that's an issue. If you get off the bus and people are going 80 miles per hour, that's an issue. So last mile connectivity, getting people actually where they need to be, those jobs, those restaurants, those stores, huge issue, especially when we look at MARTA being kind of the centerpiece with that transportation part, but the city has a part in terms of infrastructure and that last mile connectivity.
Yeah, for me, it's infrastructure, and that encompasses several things. And I've always said on the campaign trail that no matter what class you're a part of, no matter what, how much money you make, what job you have, or your education level, you deserve to have pristine infrastructure. These are public city services that you deserve, and you're paying for it with your tax dollars. So that includes public transportation, that includes paved streets, that includes proper sidewalks, that improves, that means bike lanes, that means the BRT is started. It's been over 10 years, and it still hasn't been a shovel in the ground to start that project. So for me, overall, it's proper infrastructure for all parts of our city.
So for me, in addition, because you said a new thing, for me, it's the fact that we don't have the right information, and we've not shared the right information in order for people to value who needs public transportation and how do we move people across the city. And so for me, it is the inability for us to adequately articulate the need so that we fund what needs to be funded, and realistically prioritizing our district and making sure the money moves like it needs to. So the prioritization of District 11 and information for people to understand why we do and why we should do what we need to do.
For me, the answer is accountability. I think we see a pattern of underinvestment in southwest Atlanta. I think we have seen, there are multiple examples of promises being made, of taxes being raised, of referenda being passed, and then projects being canceled, being late, being delivered, delayed, and not as promised. And so, you know, we want to see things change in southwest Atlanta. But no matter what is promised, we need to make sure there is a process that holds elected officials and the city accountable for the delivery of those projects. The people have a right to know how their money is being spent and be able to track in real time how projects are going to be delivered.
How would you address racial and economic disparities in city service and resources? We can start with Andre this time, and then we'll move to our right, and then we'll start down there.
Okay. The first thing is just to dig into the data. Like, one of the things I do as a researcher is to dig into the data and then ask questions. When we allocate funds, and we can go with the T-Spluses as an example, only 11% has been spent, but most of it has gone to north and northeast, and very little to south and southwest, where the need is, right? So we need to have some type of mechanisms in place to identify, how do we start to prioritize? In tech, we have this term called ruthless prioritization. That means we focus on the areas of the highest impact, and we start to allocate based on that. When we do that, those T-Spluses and whatever funds start to go to those areas that have been underfunded, underserved, and not towards places that are more vanity projects or places that already have a good head start compared to other parts of the city.
How would you address racial and economic disparities in city and city service and resources?
Well, first of all, call it out, right? And make sure people know that we recognize that there are disparities, and then where those disparities are, and then to prioritize where the most need is and ensure, basically what he said, right? But the first thing we have to do is call it out, and then share historically what has happened, and then how it is that we intend for it to be better, and give the data points, but then also buy-in. So have a conversation that is not antagonistic, that does not tear people down, but that is a way to build everybody up and let people see how disparities in terms of transportation keep people from being able to go to work, how those racial disparities keep people from being able to take care of their households and their families. And so then, and which also drives up the numbers of people that end up in prison. And so it is that we would share the information and call out what is wrong.
All right. Plan to address those racial disparities by doing my job as a representative of my district and speak up. Money is allocated to a certain projects, and when we're in committees, when we are voting on what, where the money goes, say, you know, basically make those, 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 I forget the word, ultimatums. I will not vote for money to go to the north and northeast if we're not getting the proper projects funded right here in southwest Atlanta. The disparities are obvious. You can drive down the streets and you can see. You can see that, man, there's a pothole here, there's a pothole there. This sidewalk is crumbling or does not exist. So you have to call those things out and play hardball, really, because if we are not getting it now, we're not going to get it unless someone speaks up on our behalf.
When it comes to racial inequity, we are fortunate enough that our district is 96% black. By simply doing our job, we are helping the racial inequities. Simply fighting for the people of southwest Atlanta is solving that problem. That's really it, but I'm trying to think of something else, is fighting for our constituents like healthcare services. We know our district struggles with having trauma centers and direct healthcare services. Someone has a fatality, or, excuse me, not a fatality, but has a car accident like we're discussing, like getting somewhere all the way to Grady is a hassle. So bringing those healthcare services, fighting for our constituents' needs and desires to come back to southwest Atlanta. And I do want to applaud the mayor, Mayor Andre Dickens, on his neighborhood reinvestment initiative, because he highlighted Campbellton Road as an area. And that starts with acknowledging that a neighborhood needs reinvestment. So whoever's elected, we're going to be that council member to see that project through. So it's holding everyone accountable, doing our jobs, and making sure we get the services and the needs and the funds that we desire.
I would use what's known as equity mapping to have a clear understanding of what's happening across the city and where we need to focus resources and attention. And so equity mapping is when you literally paint a vivid picture of key outcomes across the city. A specific example would be traffic fatalities. Like, we can know from the data that most traffic fatalities happen in majority-black communities. I want to show that on a map. We can know from the data, you know, where most of the money coming from, for example, Invest Atlanta, is being spent. Let's show that on a map. And I want to make this a very visual story about what's happening across Atlanta, and then we on the council can draft legislation to help make our city fairer for the people everywhere in this city, not just southwest Atlanta, but across the entire city.
Thank you. We're going to do a lightning round. I'll give you guys 15, 30 seconds. I'll be generous. 30 seconds. You ready?
Who's first?
Hold on, I gotta, let me figure out what the question is. Actually, let's do a show of hands, and then we can go from there. And there's no wrong answer. Raise your hand if you want to be on the transportation committee if you are elected. That's your number-one committee choice. Number-one committee choice. Nobody. Okay, interesting. Actually, let's hear a why, right? Why don't, yeah, why don't we start with you, Nate? What's your number-one committee choice and why isn't it transportation?
My number-one is finance. You have to follow the money. Everything starts with the money. The money, I mean, every transportation project has to be funded. So I think that is where the power in this city resides. That's where decisions are made. Oh, wait, is my time up?
No, Stephen heard me. What would be your number-one? And, yeah, what would be your number-one?
Yeah, and I think you asked, "Why isn't it transportation?" Transportation is high on the priority. Like, it's two or three for me, but I agree with the city council president candidates when they're saying it should be someone who has expertise in that, and that's just not my expertise. It's a passion, but not expertise. But I don't know if this is a direct title, but the community services and also the public safety committee is where my number-one would be, directly serving constituents, public safety, community services is my number-one.
So honestly, I began this campaign with transportation being number-one. But as I campaigned and I spoke to more and more people, it switched to public safety. And I saw how federal, state, Manson Carceration Programs have disproportionately affected our community, and I want to protect the people more now.
Well, my plan is always to learn kind of what are the objectives and key projects, and then see where I can leverage myself best in those committees. So I didn't want to commit to, like, that's my number-one choice, but I want to see where the need is and where I can best be leveraged. So that's my plan. I didn't have one. That's me.
Well, as a, when you, if you were, if you win, the council president will ask you for your top three or four committee assignments.
Yeah, you said number-one. You said number-one.
Right.
Transportation is in the top three.
What would be your number-one?
I don't have a number-one. I have a top...
TBD. Okay.
I'm with them, public safety. And primarily because my goal is, my goal is empowering people and protecting the community, and part of that is public safety.
Got it. Very interesting. All right. I'm going to pass it on to Amaya for the next one.
Name one bus number or route in your council district.
83, 183, 166?
And you can't? No, no, see, Stephen, don't say all of them. So do one, and it can't be repeated.
Well, my favorite, 83.
71.
183, that's the one I took, growing up.
Yeah, 66.
83, I think you said, what's my most? Okay. Then I would 81. This one was 81, too?
Don't, don't look so confused. It's okay. When's the last time you took MARTA or a non-car mode to get somewhere? Where did you go? Why don't we start with Stephen?
Oh, to the Beyonce concert that just happened.
Whoever wants to go.
I took MARTA to get here, and to the Beyonce concert, too. Yeah.
To the Maxwell concert at night.
When was that?
Was it two, three weeks ago?
Oh, I didn't know what. Nobody told me. Oh, so sad.
Last Thursday, going to the airport, always the easiest way to avoid traffic.
My nephew plays football at Georgia Tech, and so I ride it every time I go to a home game.
What's the boldest transportation idea you would champion on council if you knew you had the votes to pass it? Oh, and you can't repeat it either.
From, can I? Yeah, so for me, it is actually getting the Campbellton Road BRT done to ensure immediately that it just automatically happens with enough housing, people can get back and forth, we got the rail done, all the things for people to be able to live well in that area.
The boldest, actually moving forward with the Arrow ATL Greenway space. This is a green space that we worked on, neighbors in southwest Atlanta recently. We got into the design phase, and hopefully we can move into the development phase. That would be bold, because this has been a project that's been sitting around for That would be bold because this has been a project that's been sitting around for about 15 years.
I didn't hear the question.
What's the boldest transportation idea that you would champion on council if you knew you had the votes to pass it?
A major expansion of MARTA to Gwinnett Cobb and Henry Counties and throughout the metro, the city area.
Our district is not directly connected to the Belt Line, so I would develop something to where we have direct access, like public transportation, something to where we could go park for free and ride a transit direct access to the Belt Line.
I'd pass microtransit. So what I would say is just imagine you are, wherever you live in southwest Atlanta, and you pull out your phone, you type into an app, and a van comes and picks you up and takes you wherever else you want to go in southwest Atlanta. This is a cheap, relatively cheap and effective way to move people around a relatively small area like southwest Atlanta. So I envision myself, one day, taking microtransit to go to Greenbrier Mall.
Okay. There are a lot of you, and there are more that are not even here. But for folks who are in the audience and folks who are watching, help us understand what you bring to council uniquely that no one else on this stage does. And so why don't we start with you, Kurt, and tell us, what do you bring to city council that is unique to you and no one else?
I think a profound understanding of what is happening in this city as far as development goes, and also a heart for the people that live here now. I understand that there's a lot of pressure for displacement of our neighbors, and I feel the most in tune with understanding everyone from the top of the economic scale to those at the bottom.
Oh, I go, um, I got a 15-year in tech. I worked at P&amp;G, US Bank, and recently Meta. I bring tech expertise to this council seat. One of the things that we do at Meta, we follow three principles. We move fast, we act collaboratively, and we focus on impact. Those are the things that I want to bring to council, focusing on frameworks that get things done, tracking milestone to milestone, on budget, on time. The things that I do in tech, I want to bring to Atlanta, so.
In Atlanta, we oftentimes rely on our history and our reputation. And our reputation meaning Mayor Manner Jackson, Councilmember Jim Maddox, Carl Ware, Marvin Arrington, Michael Larry Dingle. And I feel like there's been a gap in between there to who are the politicians of today who are going to bring those same approaches and tenacity to Atlanta politics. And I decided to run because I was looking at Atlanta politics and I'm looking and I'm saying that we oftentimes need our reputation, but the politicians that we need today who truly put Atlantans first, because what made Atlanta so attractive to everybody around the country and the world, what made us the top metropolitan city in the South, what made us an equitable city that everybody could afford here and have opportunity, were the people who were willing to put it all on the line. Like, Mayor Manner Jackson could have lost that airport by his equity decisions, but he did it because he knew it was worth it. And so for me, I'm running because I know I will bring that same tenacity and attitude to city politics and also my presence. Being able to see your city council person at a restaurant that you dine in, walking in the same park as you, going to the same block party as you go to. My campaign is an example of how I live my life and how I plan to lead as the next council member of Atlanta City Council District 11.
What do you uniquely bring to city council?
Okay, great. So I'm a presiding owner of an Amy Church. I'm a pastor. I am a presiding owner, right? And I'm also have a master's in marriage and family therapy. My family owned a boutique in Atlantic Station and also in, we own a boutique in Perimeter Mall, a dress shop called Nami. We also have, and so I come to this for purpose, right? I'm not trying to use this as a stepping stone to get somewhere else. I have, and I want to use the expertise that I have in working with people and managing people in business and in the care and concern of our community. I've been an Atlanta resident 40 years. I came here in 1985 to go to school. And so in being, in caring about the people that I'm serving, that I would want to push that forward into a new arena.
I have, I'm Nate Jester. I have a unique set of experiences that will allow me to be the bridge builder that we need to address the challenges that our city and southwest Atlanta face. As a native of this district, born and raised in Ben Hill, as someone who came up through the public school system, as a Marine Corps veteran, as a Harvard-trained commercial real estate finance attorney, I'm ready to hold people accountable and get things done to improve the quality of life for my neighbors, my friends, and literally my family that still lives in the district.
Is that everyone? Great. Just a reminder for the audience, if you have a question, please raise your hand. Also, please make sure that it's transportation-related. I do have a number of interesting questions that are not at all related to transportation. So if you have that question for the candidate, you can ask them when we are done.
Transportation decisions often happen without direct input from those most at stake, young people. If elected, how will you ensure that youth have a real seat at the table in shaping Atlanta's transportation policies from street design to the Atlanta, to the city of Atlanta's operating budget? Oh, um, we can start, we can do the little popcorn thing, start in the middle, work to the right, and come back to the left.
All right, so when it comes to the youth, I think first we need to educate the youth on streets and development of transportation, why it's important. So starting at a elementary level, we need to create curriculum that they would be able to understand the process of when they get to probably about middle and high school age, we can sit side by side in forums and schools and invite them into the process. Of course, there's a groundwork that our city-paid developers are going to, you know, lay out, but it's an explanation of why these things are needed and how they work. Being a person that lived in other places, I understand the need of public transportation, even to where they could not have to use the city school buses, the APS school buses, but use the MARTA buses to get around, have free passes, and how free and liberating. When I first grew up, that was one of the most exciting things, to get on a bus and go somewhere on my own.
Right after constituents, kids are my priority. Education is big on my platform, and I'm going to take it to transportation. Anywhere I've been asked to speak at a school, I'm there. I spoke at South Atlanta High School recently, and I've also visited every school in our district, elementary, middle, and high school. But I spoke at South Atlanta High School, and I was just, most of them, if not all, did not know who their council member was. And we know, high schools that are not 18, they can't vote. But I told them what a council member does, and I talked to them about if they want to see certain establishments or businesses, institutions, et cetera, around their city, they can go to their city council person and let them know. A young lady came up to me after and said she wants a K-pop store in South Atlanta. I told her, I don't know if that'll happen, but the fact that she listened and now knows those ideas are possible, that's important. So to bring it back to transportation, it's about being present. Whether they invite you or not, if you can show up at these schools with these families, with these children, and typically let them know what you do, they'll have ideas about what to do around transportation, what things will make it equitable for them, like designing the sidewalks, like Nate said, like interesting projects, excuse me, to get them involved. But you got to be present and let them know what's all possible.
You got to meet kids where they are and they aren't, well, the youth where they are, and they're not at MPU meetings, and they're probably not at the meetings after work. So advisory councils with people representing all the schools from Emory, Georgia State, the AUC, and then even pulling out individuals from the high schools. That way, we get full coverage of the city of Atlanta in terms of representation, but also they have a voice. And meeting them, with them on a regular basis, always works. I work as a mentor on the Friends of Fame Board, and we have monthly check-ins with my mentees. And that way, we engage with them where they are, and we focus on issues that affect them. They lead the conversation, I facilitate. That's kind of how I approach things, and that's how I'll do it in council.
I don't plan on making my legislative agenda in a vacuum. I want there to be community leaders and nonprofit leaders and local business leaders and young people involved in what policies I put forward as a city council person for southwest Atlanta. So I want young people to be involved from the very beginning in what we're even going to try to accomplish while I am serving my term on city council. The second thing I would say is, I'll talk about participatory budgeting. And that is when I, I'm committed to dedicating a portion of my discretionary budget as a city council person to a project that the community decides on. And I want young people to be a part of that project. And the tide is to urbanism, maybe they'll, they'll have some, you know, tactical urbanist project that they want to see happen to create sidewalks in an area where there aren't near a school or something like that. But that's a process I want them to be a part of and to see happen in real time. And that's how we get young people more engaged and feel heard in our, in our process.
In addition to all of those, right, work with DLT, planning MARTA to create mentoring programs and to go where the, where the people are, where young people are, to the colleges, to the high schools, to the elementary schools. I've served on the GO team at Cascade Elementary School. It's vitally important that we involve young people in the things that matter to them. And so young people are using MARTA, they're using different modes of transportation. And so it is vitally important that they talk about, really, what does it mean to go from Cascade to North Atlanta High School, how they get there, and then what they need for that. And so we don't know that because we're not riding like that. So it is vitally important to go where the young people are and bring them in and also mentor them so they can find jobs in, in transportation and see all the different opportunities there are for them.
The final question for the night. Of course, any good campaign assumes that they will win, and in a race this large, they certainly would assume they would make the runoff. But unfortunately, there's only one slot and at most two slots. If you do not make the runoff, do you plan to endorse one of the candidates that does? Any of the two candidates? Just, is it yes or no?
Yes.
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 No.
Okay, Mr. Contrarian, just quickly, explain why.
I didn't think I would have to explain why. I don't know. My actual answer is, I don't know. I guess it depends on who makes the runoff, but I guess we'll see when we get there.
Okay. Thank you, District 11 candidates. Folks, please give them a round of applause. Thank you also to the volunteers, the folks who helped make this happen, to propel ATL. There is one more event on, I believe it's the 29th, and that's candidate karaoke. I don't know if you all are planning to attend, but I would strongly encourage it. I have seen, I have been around a few election cycles. I have seen people act out something because they weren't comfortable singing. I've seen someone like perform a monologue, read their favorite poem, but it's karaoke. So come, two of you all went to Beyonce concerts, so you already have something that you can play, you can sing for Beyonce, whatever it is. But we hope that you all participate in candidate karaoke, which gives folks another side of you, right? And it helps us, again, there's so many of you, so it gives us an opportunity to really differentiate and see, okay, who's going to have Maxwell, who's going to have Beyonce, who's going to have Taylor Swift? I don't know, we'll see. Who do you got, Tony?
Marvin Sett.
Marvin Sett. Wait, isn't he the one who said lock the doors? All right. Thank you all for your time and attention this evening. If you have questions, please ask the candidates. I encourage you to also visit atlancyciviccircle.org and read what the candidates said on a number of issues, including things we talked about tonight, like participatory budgeting. Thank you all.